Rules to adopt ordinance 2017-16 tonight.
Second.
All right.
Wouldn't the rules be to read it a second time, then have a motion to adopt?
Mr. President, I amend my motion to reflect the counselor's direction.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no.
Additional appropriation and reduction ordinance number 2017-16, second read. Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt additional appropriation and reduction ordinance number 2017-16.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a few questions if I may.
Sure.
I was just trying to get a little more details. I was going through it last night and the 50K for the town capital outlay, it just said other.
So I think I sent you an email earlier that pretty much detailed this entire ordinance. I have to pull that email up. I don't have my computer because I've lent my charger to Councilman Russell, so mine died as well.
So I can look at a spinning ball.
Because I got locked out of my emails yesterday, so I have no access to emails today. So that, I'm curious, what's the, in the 50K?
What's the 50K extra?
What's in the other? What does?
Computers. So there's some for, and computers in there, there's some for Boon EDC in there. There's also some items for computers coming out of CCI and CCD.
Right, so that's 50K for town capital outlay. It just said other on the documents that I saw last night, so it wasn't specific what the 50K was. And then the computers for the CCD, there's 20K in there and 30K. So we're, what, can you? It's just a lot on computers, so is that like for the whole?
So 14 computers are gonna cost us about $60,000. Here's what we're doing. Right now, we have a bunch of computers from Best Buy. They're constantly going down. We constantly have to have IT come in. When IT comes in, you gotta spend money to have them come in. It's time to get one. It's just like our vehicles. So all the police vehicles have the same Tahoe. They do the same lease, same thing here. So we have a great partnership with the Microsoft Store. And Jay, our IT consultant, has been there and talked to them, and we'll get their government rate for, 14 computers will cost us around $63,000, okay? So that's the Microsoft Surface Studio. The studio will connect with all of our tablets. Those, four of those studios will be used by the building department as basically drafting tables. They won't have to have paper plans strewn about the entire planning office anymore. They can literally just do it right there on the computer. So each department head would get one, support staff or some departments would get one. A great example is Tanya and her assistant need a nice computer. They need these types of computers. Another thing it does is pretty much, we won't have to get another computers for, Microsoft Store has informed us for about five to six years. We'll have one standard unit here. They'll give us support. They'll come in and train us on them. They'll, that includes warranty costs in there on the computers, so for a pretty good price. Jay's gotten a pretty good price for a computer that we're not gonna have to upgrade again. That's what the number for computers is.
14 computers, you said?
I think it was 14.
For $63,000?
There's other items in there.
All the software.
So...
That's a 45.
While I was sitting here, I pulled up the email you sent out.
Oh, thank you.
That was sent on May 1st outlining some of the things in the additional appropriation. And in here, it shows that there is installation of cameras and call boxes along the Big Four Trail.
Oh, yeah, that's, I knew there was an item. I forgot. The call boxes, the capital outlay item really is the call, the call boxes and cameras will cost us $50,000.
So I saw that.
Sorry, I forgot about that.
That was like $13,000 or?
There's also an increase to our Boone EDC line as well, referenced in the email, so.
The cameras and the call boxes on the trail?
Yeah, okay, so that's what, so then the computers, it's not 63,000, 14 computers?
It's just one piece of it.
Yeah, okay. Thank you for, I just wanna understand more what we're doing with all the computers, so that's what we're doing.
Yes, we're getting rid of Lenovo's and Toshiba's and outdated computers that crash and won't, won't help us run our operations and getting one standard unit at one time with CCD and CCI and having a nice system in place. It's just part of the growing of the town. It's just another step in, we're no longer a startup company working out of a barn over on Cuzzy Lane.
Well, the last time we bulk purchased computers was 2008, so it's time to update that because we've been piecemealing it as we needed to add all along. So we need to make sure that moving forward, we stay to the same platform and that we're moving forward, buying consistently the same, so that we don't have to do another mass purchase like this again.
Right. Nathan, are you here? Do you remember the cost that we were looking at for the cameras and call boxes on the trails?
The call boxes without cameras are $10,000 plus a piece, and we're needing 12. So we've been working with Jay and he's able to put call boxes with cameras for half that price. We still have to figure out fiber. I mean, with Morphe's next week out, we're gonna come up with the cost to put the poles and fiber and everything, but he's more than cut, he's cut the price in half and added the cameras, which are the high-res at our intersections and will give us complete coverage on the trail with access for PD to pull it up on their mobile devices or in-house at any time. So Jay's done really good with putting a program together that gives us more.
So that, the $50,000 for computers is out of CCI and CCD. The $50,000 capital outlay is a part of funding that project because there's other money in capital outlay, as you like to ask me all the time. Why is there so much money in there? That can be used to come up with the additional money if you all do approve the final proposal for the cameras and call boxes for that project. We like to do our financial planning upfront and not have to worry about coming up with it after the fact, because that's just not a very good plan, so.
Thank you for walking through that.
You're welcome.
All right, any further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Next up, we have ordinance 2017-17, an ordinance annexing territory to the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Would someone like to do the first read?
Ordinance 2017-17, an ordinance of the Town Council of the Town of Whitestown, Indiana, annexing territory to the town of Whitestown, Indiana, placing the same within the corporate boundaries thereof and making the same a part of the town of Whitestown. Reinhardt Supervoluntary Annexation.
Moving on to letter C, ordinance 2017.
Did he want to say anything?
Ordinance 2017-18, an ordinance amending zoning maps within the zoning ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana. Mr. President, I move we adopt ordinance 2017-18.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Next, letter D, ordinance 2017-19 on First Street.
Ordinance 2017-19, an ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving a depository for town funds, First Street. Mr. President, I'd make a motion, we suspend the rules and have second read this evening.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Rules are suspended, five to zero.
Ordinance number 2017-19, an ordinance of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, approving a depository for town funds. Mr. President, I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2017-19.
Second.
We have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Up next, letter E, ordinance 2017-20.
Ordinance 2017-20, appropriation ordinance, town of Whitestown, Indiana.
All right, up next, we have letter F, resolution 2017-17.
Resolution number 2017-2017, a resolution of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, declaring an economic revitalization area and approving application for real property tax abatement. Triform LLC.
Dax?
So the applicant is Triform, but that's GDI Construction with Fishback Creek Business Park, which is at the corner of County Road 500 and Albert S. White, just north of Amazon. And so they're requesting a standard spec abatement. We've done these before on real property. They think that they have a very good prospect, which is a publicly traded company. Now, think is one thing, do is another. But we've done these before. It's really a marketing tool. Did it for Building 8A, did it for Building 7A, did it for most of the Duke buildings, most of the Perry Industrial buildings. So I don't see, I've talked to Molly about these things as well, and it's not unheard of or unique or something that I don't think that we should consider approving. So tonight, what you have is, it's not an ERA. So because it's not an ERA, you have to establish an ERA and you have to approve the application concurrently. So this is a first read of a declaratory resolution. The Redevelopment Commission will hear this as well. Then you'll have a confirmatory resolution in front of you. That is a public hearing to create the ERA and, and, and once you do that, then you're essentially approving the application for real property abatement as well. The ERA that is being created covers that entire TIF. And what happened at the last meeting was there was a confirmatory resolution to expand the Legacy Core TIF. This is in that TIF and will help produce revenue to potentially do projects in Legacy Core as well. This project will probably ask for some TIF financing as well to pretty much completely upgrade County Road 500 East. curb and gutter it, build it to standards for trucks. It'll be, right now, it's a falling apart mess. So it's probably something that needs to be done. It's come in our jurisdiction at the end with the annexation last year. That's one, just one project and one item. And there could be substantial AV built by the Fishback Creek Business Park into this TIF. So this is just one, the first process of, of a two, two-step process.
Mr. President, I move the adoption of resolution number 2017-17.
Second. Got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Next up, we have resolution 2017-18, a resolution commending the Indiana General Assembly for its efforts in studying applied behavior analysis and how best to employ applied behavior analysis in the state of Indiana. Whereas, public health is of vital importance to local government, the community, and the quality of life in our community. And whereas, the Town Council for the town, town of Whitestown, Indiana, fully supports obtaining a better understanding of whether applied behavior analysis and treatment of individuals is being properly administered. And whereas, applied behavior analysis is more particularly defined in House Enrolled Act 1644, adopted by the 120th Indiana General Assembly. And whereas, studying applied behavior analysis and how best to employ applied behavior analysis in the state of Indiana can ensure that important public health services are properly provided to the citizens of Whitestown, Indiana. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, on behalf of the citizens of Whitestown, commends the 120th Indiana General Assembly for its action in creating a study committee for the purpose of reviewing licensing, independent centers, and the appropriate training for applied behavior analysis through the enactment of House Enrolled Act 1644. I move that we adopt resolution 2017-8.
Second.
We've got a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have resolution 2017-19.
Resolution number 2017-19, a resolution commending the Indiana General Assembly for promoting employment for individuals with disabilities and promoting competitive integrated employment in the state of Indiana. Whereas, it is the policy of the Town Council for the town of Whitestown, Indiana, to promote efforts in the town of Whitestown, Indiana, that encourage employment of its citizens. And whereas, the Town Council fully supports the promotion of employment, including self-employment of all of its citizens, including those with disabilities who are of working age. And whereas, the Town Council further supports resolving barriers to employment for individuals with disabilities. And whereas, employment of individuals with disabilities and competitive integrated employment is a worthy goal. And whereas, the Indiana General Assembly, through Senate Enrolled Bill 390, adopted by the 120th Indiana General Assembly, provides policies and objectives of the Indiana Commission on Rehabilitation Services, which promote the same objectives outlined herein. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, that the Town Council on behalf of the citizens of Whitestown, commends the 120th Indiana General Assembly for its action in adopting Senate Enrolled Bill 390 and promoting competitive integrated employment, including self-employment, as the first and preferred option when providing services to individuals with disabilities who are of working age. Mr. President, I move we adopt resolution number 2017-19.
Second.
We have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have resolution 2017-20.
Resolution number 2017-20, a resolution commending the Indiana General Assembly for providing certain protection for removing a domestic animal from a locked motor vehicle. Whereas, the Town Council for the town of Whitestown, Indiana, recognizes the need to protect animals from inhumane treatment and cruelty. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention report that when temperatures outside range from 80 degrees to 100 degrees, the temperature inside a car parked in direct sunlight can quickly climb to between 130 and 172 degrees. And whereas, researchers at the Stanford University School of Medicine have found that even on a relatively cool day, the temperature inside a parked car can quickly spike to life-threatening levels if the sun is out. And whereas, studies show that cracking the windows has little effect on a vehicle's internal temperature. And whereas, having no sweat glands, dogs and cats pant to lower their body temperature. And if they're inside a vehicle recycling very hot air, panting gives no relief and heat stroke can happen very quickly. And whereas, the heat stroke can permanently damage a pet's health very rapidly, resulting in coma, organ dysfunction, permanent brain damage, or death. And whereas, the Town Council encourages the citizens of the town of Whitestown, in event they encounter an animal in a vehicle that is in distress or showing signs of heat-related illness, to call the police or 911 immediately and leave your name and phone number with the person who takes the call in case the responding officers need more information. And go inside to any nearby business and ask the manager to make an announcement that the owner needs to return to the vehicle immediately. And whereas, the Town Council supports preventing unnecessary death of animals by providing immunity from liability for property damage to a person who removes a domestic animal from a motor vehicle if the person reasonably believes that the animal's in imminent danger of suffering serious bodily harm. And whereas, for these reasons, the Town Council previously adopted resolution number 2017-08 entitled, "A Resolution of the Town Council Encouraging the Indiana General Assembly to Enact Legislation Providing Immunity for Rescuing an Animal from a Motor Vehicle." And whereas, the Indiana General Assembly adopted and the governor signed House Enrolled Act 1085, which provides certain immunity and other protections for individuals who rescue animals from locked vehicles. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Town Council of the town of Whitestown, Indiana, hereby commends 120th Indiana General Assembly for its action in providing certain limited immunity to individuals for rescuing animals from motor vehicles and providing broader immunity to law enforcement, officers, firefighters, government officers, and/or employees when rescuing animals from motor vehicles through the enactment of House Enrolled Act 1085. Mr. President, I would make a motion, we adopt a resolution number 2017-20.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Resolution is adopted, five to zero. Moving on to letter J, consider approval of low bid for a public works project for the Legacy Core Storm Sewer Project.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We, we got bids for the Storm Sewer Project and Legacy Core. I believe in your information states we got them on April 19th, and the apparent low bidder was Great X. They submitted everything that was necessary, and we looked at some of the options. And I think, Dax, are we gonna go with the total or are we gonna go with 1.8?
Dan, can you explain what the?
The bottom number there on the total, 2.269,410 and 50 cents was the low bid, and that's what we're gonna recommend to award. Kevin, you had a question?
Yeah, you were saying that you were only gonna alternative, different alternatives. Was that different parts of the project that we were adding in, or was it construction alternatives?
No, these alternatives are different areas that were, we looked at to bid. So if we do all the alternatives, that's 2.2, and that's what we're gonna recommend.
That's what I was gonna ask, because there were some that weren't in the original recommendation. And why would we not do it all?
Well, it came down to money. We did get a good bid, so I'd recommend doing it all. We did get, remember, we do have $500,000 OCRE grant for this project, and I did get the release of funds on that last week, so we're good to go. And I've already scheduled, pending your approval, a pre-construction meeting for next week.
I think it's great to be able to do all the areas.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
It's good. And we've coordinated with Vectren, and I think we'll make something work with them, so.
Yes.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I'd make the motion that we award the bid to the low bidder, Great X, to a total of $2,269,410 and 50 cents.
Second.
I would say to make sure that it includes all the alternatives that were mentioned, so all the sections.
It does.
Base bid plus all six alternates, yes.
We've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero.
Thank you.
Up next, we have letter K, consider a contract for professional services for the Whitestown Parkway Improvement Project Engineering Services. Dax?
So you approved the ban from Maple Grove, the 1.1 million dollar bond netting a million. This is the contract for services to, for engineering services for Midwestern to provide their services. They, very similar to the contract they did for us for Barker Road. And we think it's competitive price, so. Not to exceed 60,000, I believe is the number. That'll be paid, that'll be paid out of the ban. That'll be paid as part of the project.
I'd entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I move that we authorize Jason Lawson to execute this contract as presented with a not to exceed amount of 60,000.
Second.
Approve our form contract with a not to exceed 60,000.
To be approved by legal.
Does that have a second?
Second.
The new motion?
New motion has second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion, it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter L, consider approval to apply for LWCF grant for the Parks Department.
Counsel, recently, we were reached out to by Morning Dove Writing Stables, who has 14.25 acres up in the Anson Industrial District. They have decided they are not going to use that as a condition with Duke giving them that land. Now they're wanting to give it to us, and Duke is in agreement with that becoming a park. I would like to use that to apply for land water conservation funds through the DNR. The value of the land will cover the 200,000 match that's required for that, which would get us, if awarded, 200,000 from DNR. A similar plan to this would be about 300,000 between construction, engineering, design, just the full spectrum. Drew Berry helped us put some numbers together for that based off of real numbers. So, meeting with DNR next week to look at the project to see how it would score. But since this is due June 1st, this is our last council meeting before the application is due, there's a few documents from town that would be required to be signed, and then a commitment stating that we do have the necessary funds to complete this project. My recommendation suggestion would be look at using impact fees to cover the potential $100,000 additional to put the project not to exceed an extra 100,000 on top of the grants with 300,000 in construction costs. We will have to have a public meeting prior to then, so I will, if approved, schedule a public meeting before June 1st to get public input before putting in the final grant application. And just pretty much bring it in front of council to, it's kinda last minute for a project, but I think it's a great opportunity that's came to us. It's within two miles of Walker Farms, the new developments on the trails. As those trails are tied in, it gives access and it also gives a place for employees of that area in the industrial park to have a place to go have lunch, to the basketball courts, people to go before and after work, and just kind of a nice incentive for the businesses that are coming to that area. And if that's hard to see, I have a couple smaller printables. Somebody would like one?
I'll take one.
Thank you, sir.
So as you see, the property, it includes the 15.25 acres, about seven acres of its wooded. Within that's about a 6.6 acre pond. This would put ADA approved, but kind of a compacted ag like we have in Walker Farms Park, pathway through it with a little overlook for the pond, and then asphalt trail down in the grass area with basketball court, shelter with restrooms, parking. And in this, we put cornhole boards. They're concrete, or you put them in, there's no maintenance, but then it's, people can come out and just sit and have cornhole tournaments if they wanted, or play cornhole. Looking at trying to add some of those concrete type play structures that give people something to do, so.
I like this, and I'm glad that you pursued getting. Watch, okay. I appreciate you going and getting this done and trying to make sure that you meet the grant deadlines. And I think this is a great project for us to be working on. It's in a good location where we don't have anything out there. And it's a great amenity, not only for our town residents, but even for those who are working within this, within this. And perhaps it will encourage more of them to relocate to our town, to see the amenities that we're able to offer. I would make a motion that we, we not only approve, but we encourage approve, apply for this grant, that we use the impact fees to fund up to 100,000 extra to make this go. And allow Dax to execute any agreements necessary to meet the deadlines of June 1st.
Yeah, I think that's great. Thank you for putting this together and all your work on that. It's exciting.
I'll second the motion.
All right, we've got a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Thanks, Nathan.
Thank you.
Good work.
Get it.
All right, up next, we have letter L, consider an expenditure exceeding $5,000 for the Big Four Trail signage.
I'll stay up here for this one. Tonya's not here, Tonya's put a lot of work into this one. It is a, kind of a, as we say, we work closely in, internal with her marketing, she proposed this. It's the trail map, as we initially brought up with the trail signage. The price comes in at about 7,300 for all the signs we would do at the trailheads in the beginning and end of the trail, including installation. We were, we received 7,500 last year for the easement across the trail from, for the energy, electric easement. As a stipulation from the DNR, that money has to come back into the trail, so I think this would be a good use of that 7,500, as the 7,300 that's needed to create these signs. And if there's any stipulation, I believe Tonya kinda met the, the colors and requirements that were wanted in, and adding our logos to these is planned up. She's not here to speak, I don't think, so. Well, she is, oh. But, yes, Tonya's put a lot of work into getting these right, the way she felt, so. But it's, it is a trail, so I'm just here to ask for approval to move forward with the purchase and installation of these signs.
I would entertain a motion.
I make a motion, we approve up to 7,500, not to exceed 7,500 for the purchase of the Big Four Trail signage.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and it's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion's adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter N, consider approval of temporary road closure request. Dax?
It's our annual National Night Out road closure request to close Botwell Drive and Veterans Drive from Central to Whitestown Parkway.
I make a motion, we approve the closure of Veterans Drive and Botwell Drive for National Night Out, August 1st, 2017, from noon to midnight.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say no. Motion is adopted, five to zero. Up next, we have letter O, discuss an expenditure exceeding $5,000, Dude Solutions Software.
Yes, yeah, I've questioned their name. All their products have names, I think it may just be a bunch of really smart college kids who came up with an idea and are hanging out with it.
Nathan, your proposal that you sent out was clear as mud, I hate to say that, but all that, I couldn't even figure out what, what you were asking for with the proposal.
Okay, well, sorry, I'll, any questions you have, I can go with, but what it is, long story short, is a GIS-based software that will work with our current. It puts it into a mobile app to where we can go out and anything from if one of our employees are out in a park and notice something's broke, they can hit something, it gives a GIS work order. It builds in reviews. Playgrounds have to have a monthly inspection and biannual inspections. So it builds all that into the program using the GIS. Everything from, hey, make sure you empty the trash cans this week. It also works, I've met with Brian with inspection and talked to them, if a street sign's down, we can hit, one of our employees can hit the button and they'll send a work order, GIS-based, to go in. So it just links to our ThinkGIS to give us a mobile ability to add, edit, produce work orders from that software. Also included in it is a scheduling software for this facility that would work with an online base to where if a member wanted to rent a part of the facility, they could pull the map, or pull a calendar, see what is rented. They could go ahead and through that software, fill out all the applications, choose anything from the way they want tables arranged at the facility to whether they want tables. It's just taking our ThinkGIS that a handful of us here can use and putting it into the hands of all the employees and adding the ability to, like I said, work orders. If a piece of trail, they go by and it's broke, one of our guys can tag it, it's gonna send me a notification with GIS location of, hey, this trail's bad.
The proposal looked like it was population-based, and that proposal would have been out of date. How much more is it gonna cost us if...
The proposal will still be honored.
Even though the population is, you and they...
Our special, this was done before our special census numbers were, and they said they'll honor this proposal.
So what about the renewal?
The renewal isn't based on population. They said, they put in for the next year, I believe was a little over 7,000 for the additional year, and they said their average, if they go up, is usually around 3% yearly, is what they've had in the past with increases.
I, I like the concept. I'd rather prefer that our departments each not get an individual one for this, that we get something that could work with streets and with parks and with everything else.
This will.
So, so while it's coming from parks, it's for all the departments, Jason, your departments would use it too?
We're, when unveiling it, we're doing it as a three-department, so it would be parks, storm water can be in, and streets can be in it. It can evolve to the point if we want to add other departments to add building and planning with code enforcement. PD could add, add-on pieces to it. It, it's expandable into multiple, and if you watch the video, they mainly focused on the street and the sewer, 'cause it schedules hydrant flushing, to where it's gonna pop up and let you know in your work order when you need to run each hydrant based off of GIS. There's a lot more in-depth to the program, but we're looking at going to the program to see how it really works without jumping everyone to it.
The things that I've seen on something, I had a customer contact software, whatever, customized from municipalities, lets the individuals, the public, the constituents, access and say, hey, I see this problem here or this problem here, and even take a picture of it on their phone and, and put it in. Does this software have that capability?
It does.
Or is it strictly going to be for employees?
No, if we wanna open it up to a public portal and allow certain aspects, we can choose what those aspects are of whether we wanna allow them to put in, hey, they see a street sign down, but same token of whether we want to put items in to where all of a sudden our utility guys getting...